All right, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. And do I have to see alternates? Yes, I have to see alternates. So I'm gonna see Jonathan Yisley. Yeah. And is Doug an alternate?
No.
No, okay. I'm still gonna use everybody.
He's a regular for Steven Antonio's Vacancy.
That's right. Your Stevens. Okay.
And then just so you're aware, Ram is supposed to be attending, so he might show up.
If he shows up in time. So a call to order, roll call. Joanne Hogan, Doug McAlwin, Sheri Landerman, and Jonathan Yisley.
Here.
We're going to hear our first application. Can Sheri read that in?
Yes, application ZBA number 24-02 of Curtis Looney and Manu Sangloony, applicant owner for variance to section 3.9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to construct and attach accessory dwelling unit within established property setbacks by reducing the side yard setback from plus or minus 40 feet to plus or minus 31.4 feet and reduce the rear yard setback from plus or minus 50 feet to plus or minus 47 feet at 10 Cedar Glen Assessors map, D10, block 147, block 207. Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070, Zone R40. Public hearing continued from March 27, 2024.
Thank you. I'll note too that Ram Khaza just arrived, so he could be included.
Sorry, I went to townhouse.
No worries. Is there someone here to speak to this application? Yes, you are. Please state your name and address.
My name is Sangloony, 10 Cedar Glen, Borough, Western Great Connecticut, 0602.
So when you were with us last time, we just determined that we wanted some more, maybe some investigation into reducing either the size or the number and/or the number of setbacks. So how would you like to respond?
Yep, so I mean, I think the part of the request was to confirm things that I had thought were the case with our designer. And I didn't have her here, but she was willing to come, so she put another zoning meeting. So in doing that, I think some of the original assumptions that I had had, that my memory certainly was correct, like some of the things that were done were sort of like requirements. The goal was to not have any additional variance request needed. And then so we can go through some of the points that were documented in this letter to kind of indicate why whatever was necessary had to be there. But what we were able to do, as she tried to kind of redo some of the things, was take off some of the variance requests on each end.
Okay. Yeah, I read the letter. Did you guys all read the letter from the architect? I hope that was helpful.
Yeah.
In how she explained what they were able to. So basically, the big thing is they were able to remove the door between the small door to the right of the garage that had been planned. So now that, yeah, right.
So right in here?
So yeah, they removed that right. Exactly.
So you can see the door in the original.
Now it's moved over, so that bought you some space. I also appreciated the explanation of the third garage and how the, because of the elevation changes, the access from the existing garage wouldn't be flat into the addition. So that answers a bit of the need for the... Right. And for the, actually for that garage to be there because the existing garage wouldn't be a step into the new addition, which could be an issue going forward. And does anyone else have something specific to speak to that? Or to anything that they read in the letter from the architect? Or to the changes in the size of things?
Where's the letter?
The letter is...
So the letter was part of the application?
Bottom, under the, thank you. It's at the bottom, under the floor plan. It says, "Letter from Architect," near the bottom of the... So they narrowed the garage and made it what they could to maintain accessibility around a car. You have to be able to get out of the car. And the slope of the backyard prohibits it being moved back. So that front yard setback, or is it the side yard or the front? Front yard setback.
It's a side yard setback and a rear yard setback.
Side yard setback is, was reduced a smidge. So you were at 31.4, now you've gone to 32.3. So it's 0.9 feet less of an ask. If that makes sense to people.
I would also like to note, just for the record really quick, so in the letter, the architect submitted the calculation that she did for the accessory dwelling unit. She didn't include the finished basement as part of the total that goes towards the bank that you can essentially draw from for an ADU. So it's actually greater than that. It's kind of a moot point, just because the applicant is now proposing around a 606 square foot ADU, as opposed to 650 that was originally proposed. But the limit, just so you guys are aware, is 1,221 square feet.
And what's their maximum? Where's the total, are they at?
So right now, they're only proposing 606.
Oh, I see.
Strictly for the accessory dwelling unit portion of the addition. So they were well under that limit in the first submission. And then since the revisions have been made.
But that doesn't include the downstairs, does it?
So that includes, basically the way that's calculated is we take the living area off the property card. And so typically, that will be broken out with the living area. But then it can also include in separate categories, finished basement space. And then there's some additional categories that we would look at. And so the architect just didn't take in the finished basement space.
Okay, got it. So they're within their... Anyone else? Something to know? Hardship, slope, and septic system?
And if there's anything you'd like to see, just let me know.
Can we just go back?
Yeah.
Variance is 8.6 and now it's 7.7.
Right, so they reduced it almost a foot on the side and a half on the rear. Did we ever hear anything from neighbors?
No public comment or has received for this application.
Okay. That to me means that they are objecting. That's how I have to take that. Doug, anything?
And then, so Ally is absent for this meeting, but I believe she was the one that requested exterior photos of the home just to get a better idea. So this is essentially the space that the addition would be placed.
It does show the slope pretty clearly.
So you can see the side of the house. And then this is the backyard.
At the side and the backyard.
Yeah.
And that's actually sloped, right? Okay.
Yeah, it goes all the way to the water.
You can see that slope kind of keeps going.
It's a two-dimensional photograph.
Yeah, it's hard to flat.
Do you think that our house in our windows, it looks like we have a flat backyard? And you don't want some stuff.
And from the room, it's like 10 feet slopes.
You can't even see the backyard.
Yeah, so this is a good representation of that.
Do you all have anything else you want to say? Because at some point, we'll close the discussion and have our own discussion before we vote. So I want to make sure you guys feel comfortable.
I mean, I just, I was saying that unfortunately, my mother-in-law this past week with this hospital was in Maryland. She's on her way back today. But it highlights the issue in which she has a four-bedroom house in King Circle, which is a great neighborhood, great area, that is too big for her. And she needs to be around family. So if something happens, who's older lady? It opens up another house for another family to move into town. Additional cars in town as far as taxes. So there's that side of it. I know this is not part of this process, but if that's great for another house and bring another family into town, which perhaps our car would be at our house. It will allow us to be able to tend to her to, you know, because there's no one else in Connecticut for her family. So it'd be a big help. Took us a while to get to this point to be able to say, you know, we're willing to take on this responsibility of housing our mother-in-law. So it'd be very helpful. I think we've done this in a way that allows her to keep her own privacy, but to also allow us to be able to interact with her on a regular basis to be sure that she's okay. So we've tried to keep it as small as possible just because, you know, we have neighbors to make sure it fits into the area. And then I just, you know, add that to the personal side of it to say, hey, this is something we're trying to do for that purpose. So hopefully this gave me enough adjustments to make sure this can go forward.
Yeah, and just also, I think there was a question about like size. Like, could it be smaller in ways just as far as the living unit goes? And I did confirm, like, we went through all of the different places. And it's sort of, it is really taking into account that potential for a walker or wheelchair. And so it's like, you know, just everything, even the bathroom, like, if you were able to turn around within the bathroom. So just everything was taken into account for that. And so she, we tried to try to bring in and have no variance requests for the back variance, but it would prohibit movement in the other rooms, adequate movement around typical furniture, like we, like inventory evidence and that. And we could take one, she was like, okay, I think we can handle that one. But we can make it smaller and still have that.
All right, I think I'll make a motion to close discussion, which means it's closed to the public. We'll deliberate and then vote.
I would just get a second and...
Yeah, a second for that.
Sure.
Thank you. So the hearing is closed. So to us to discuss, anything else we want to discuss? All right, I'm gonna say that one thing I did notice in the letter from the architect is she stated that they didn't include in this floor plan any, you know, kind of elaborate things like walk-in closets and things like that in order to keep the size of it compact. So that was appreciated, that that detail was pointed out. Clearly, they went back and getting rid of that door, which may not have been your first choice, the first choice, to have not have that door next to the garage is appreciated because it did break things in. I think they've made concessions and certainly went back and did their best to minimize the setbacks. It is unusual to be asking for two variances. Not a common thing we see. But I feel like they went back and minimized it as much as they could, given the need to have accessibility from a garage into the house and that the existing garage wouldn't allow that into this new addition either. So there has to be some way for them to get into the house. So anyone else?
I am still struggling with the two variances. And I'm in houses all the time. I appreciate that they made some adjustments. They don't make a big difference. I wish the regulations were clearer or more adaptive to the ADU issue because I think that's an upcoming huge issue for my generation. And it's a huge issue in all the surrounding towns. But if I have to take it based on the regulations, I'm just really, I'm struggling with there being two variances. I think it sets difficult precedents. I know the street. I know this lot, while it's sloped, is not in and of itself for an R40 lot, an unusable, difficult lot. You're trying to add an addition to a house that's including an extra garage, an additional living space, and additional space below. I agree with the need, if you're gonna design something like this, to have the extra space to, I mean, I'm constantly working with people. We're trying to get that extra space for a wider door or swing for the, you know, for a wheelchair. I think all houses should take that into effect. I do think they could have locked a couple of feet off the back and had plenty of space. If I look at the sizes of assisted living units or some of the other units. So I, and I'm not ignoring at all the need for this type of thing. I just, when I look at what I'm supposed to use for criteria, I'm having, I'm just having to...
Does anyone have a comment in regard to that?
Well, I think they've shrunk it as much as they could. And I'm okay with two variances. They're not asking for a crazy amount of space. And there's plenty of them.
I don't see a way that they couldn't. It's short of eliminating the garage. They can't get rid of that side yard setback at all. I mean, there's still gonna be setback there.
Right.
Or the side yard variance, I should say. I'm not...
I mean, even taking into account the fact that the building is on an angle to where the side and rear yard are. So it's like triangles. So I'm really, I'm really taking that into consideration.
Right, that is, the angles are awkward.
You know, so I'm thinking, okay, well, if, you know, if you didn't go back this far, then, you know, you didn't need that back triangle. Or could you... You know, if the garage, if you utilized the garage space... Okay, so the entry going into this unit space is the same width as the garage space for the proposed addition. So I'm like, is there any way that if the garage was a foot or two shorter in that footprint, that you could take a foot off the back or something so that we didn't need that triangle? I'm just, I'm just trying to think how, I think to make it work.
Is it a narrow size? Narrow size?
Yeah, that is, you mean, front to back.
Right. Even an opportunity to reduce the size?
I mean, okay, so a standard garage is 10 by 20. That's small, but that's like your minimum 10 by 20. Like, if you go and you rent a garage space, that's what you have. But then you don't have much room to get out and move around. I see this all the time. So I'm always looking at the placement of where the garage doors are and how much space is to the right and left to see how people can get out of the car, open the doors, how you could ramp if you had to, certain things to get in. Exactly. So they, they do have an extra four feet, which is good because they don't have a huge... I mean, see how the opening into that second garage? If that wall space was shorter or more open, then if it was narrower, you'd have, you know, you'd have space to swing around. That doesn't help. You can't reduce that much because you need that space to get into that, how they have that kitchen and entry into the house.
There has to be a door into the kitchen.
Exactly. So I'm, you know, so I'm looking at that and I'm, you know...
I mean, that's what I'm thinking. There's no opportunity to reduce the garage size.
Right. But I mean, that said, the way the bonus space and everything is set up, I have seen a ton of condominiums, units for other people that do not have eating kitchens in regular housing. I see it all the time. This does have very good adequate space. It's a really good plan. It's a good amount of space. It's the size of a one-bedroom apartment in a lot of places. So I'm trying to, I'm really trying to factor everything in. But I'm also trying to look at what we're supposed to use as criteria in order to give a variance. And I'm always concerned with the precedence that you set when you give them.
Well, you're dealing with each individual application, each application individually.
Right.
So if we find that there are special conditions and circumstances with this piece, it's this piece.
Okay. But does that mean, so just help me with this. Does that mean that any applicant can choose to, for what they think is a good reason, to say, I want to put this on my land? And we're supposed to take that into consideration as we give?
If their land specifically
Right.
has a condition that is preventing them from using it as this one has the slope and the...
Okay.
So similar conditions exist, I think.
Right. But you have, you have a lot with particular restrictions based on zoning. And you have a different use of sorts. It's still residential, but you're adding additional space. Couldn't mean, do you...
Well, I think that the only way that to satisfy what you were saying would be to say that the backyard setback, the backyard, the rear yard setback going from 50 to 47.5, you want them to find two and a half feet so they don't need the rear yard setback. The question is then, is there two and a half feet in this floor plan? Without getting rid of the garage? Because I don't think getting rid of the garage is, or even changing the size of it is really the solution.
No, I don't either, but I'm thinking within that space, can the floor plan be pulled forward?
It would have to be... Well, and make the garage, but... It's still, you know, not really. So...
Because you have the wall. Yeah. So this is...
If granted, two variances is not enough.
It's, well, it's just not a common thing.
This picture doesn't look like that picture. What am I seeing differently?
Well, you have to look at the new floor plan, which is here.
I have, I did look at it, I'm just...
This is the new one, if you want to look at it right here.
Yeah.
So the new floor plan, that's not the new one. Wait, yes, it is. It doesn't have the door next to the garage. So you would somehow have to bring the back of the building two and a half feet smaller. The space would have to come out of kitchen space and living space, most likely.
I mean, really, the reason it bothers me with the two the most is because the percentage of the side yard variance is fairly substantial already. And then we're granting a second variance.
Side yard is...
We're going from 50 feet to 32.3. And the backyard is going from 40 to 50 to 47.5. So it's a total of about... 18, 20, if you're 20 feet. No, wrong, because I'm right. Total of about eight, 10 and a half feet. That they're asking for. Ram or Jonathan, anything?
I mean, the hardship to me seems clear. The slope of the property, the only place to even consider an addition is where they've put it. And the back of the property seems to punch us up against no one that's going to see that two, two and a half foot variance. And that, that two and a half feet is not impacting the value of neighbors' properties. It's not impacting safety in the community in any way, shape, or form. So to me, it seems reasonable from those perspectives.
I agree with Jonathan. And the homeowner and architect have come down significantly on the side.
Well, not even a foot.
No. On the back, they came down not even a foot. On the side, they came down a lot, didn't they?
About a foot on the side.
Half a foot down.
And a half on the back because they took the door out.
Right, right. Sorry. I can't read.
I do think we should note that the angle of the house on the property is part of the issue here. If it were more straight, that, the front corner wouldn't probably be quite as dramatic of an ask.
Right, and that's why I was hoping that they'd be able to do something that then the triangle piece would be less.
I appreciate what Jonathan said, and I appreciate that the neighbors have not been in touch at all, so I don't think anyone's objected to this. Not that that's always what we go by, but if we had an objection, it would be something to think about, and we don't. Not that that's always what we go by, but if we had an objection, it would be something to think about, and we don't.
Well, okay. Do we know, I think it's somewhere in here, but maybe it's easy for Joe to just pull it out. Okay. Do we know the actual square footage of both triangles total?
Of the triangles?
Of the triangles that are being, the square footage of what the variance actually implies.
So you're essentially saying the square footage of this?
And the piece in the back.
So I believe the architect referenced...
Is it in the letter?
Yeah, I believe she referenced the actual square footage that's being reduced. So in the letter to the architect, it says, "The design submitted for review asks for approximately 200 square foot of variance, 150 square feet on the front corner, and 50 square feet off the rear yard."
Okay. So...
So she's saying that this is 50 square feet approximately, and then this is 150. Yes, approximately 150 square feet.
And she decreased it by 80 square feet. Which is...
Of course, if you take that, say, 200 square feet, and your living space that you're trying to actually get is 600, that's like, I mean, it's a third percentage-wise. So I'm trying, I really am trying to balance this.
I know, but the 600 is in, most of the variance is the garage.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't move the whole thing back.
No, no, we can't.
Which wouldn't help anyway, because the backyard setback would grow more. They would be bigger, probably, if they moved it back. So...
It's also slope significantly.
Right, even if you could, it would not reduce the setback amount that we're asking for.
Well, and the back setback, as far as visually, is not... Percentage-wise, that's not as big an ask. And it doesn't, nobody really sees it. The side yard is, you know, fairly substantial percentage-wise as an ask. So that, so then having two of them is...
What's the acreage of this lot?
Thought I saw it earlier.
I know, there's the square footage, I don't know if that translates into...
A builder's acre is 40,000 square feet.
It's not so...
A true acre, but it's a builder's acre. So our 40, 40,000 square feet to make a lot, that's an acre.
So the lot is just under an acre?
Yeah. Yeah, because a builder's acre is not quite 40.
Not quite an acre.
Right.
I was just curious. I don't know, I drove by. I do think setting the, pushing it back the way they're doing makes it look like it belongs there, and it's not imposing on the entrance of, or the facade of the house. Can we go back to the front photo? That. So it's going to be tucked back a little bit from that garage that's there. I don't think that it's going to look like it's intruding on...
And it's not even visible from...
Well, it will be when you drive up. I drove down the street and it's on the left. And so when you drive up, you'll see the addition. You will.
Do you have something that, I'm sure we do, the, shows the lot itself, where the front setback? Can you show that back again, please?
So again, this is the original submission, but you can see the front yard setback is here.
Yeah, can you...
Side yard setback is here, rear yard.
Yeah, the house is really on the setback. Like, it's, the way it's positioned, I think, is a piece of this hardship, that it's really positioned very close to that left side setback. It's not centered on the property.
Yeah, because I was going to say, can you show the front line of how the street line is to the house again?
If it were centered on the property, we wouldn't be here, probably. So I think that's another consideration, that they are dealing with a house that's not centered, and the other side of it is not buildable because of the setback.
Was it positioned on the lot because of the wetlands off to the right, do you think?
It was probably aesthetic.
Okay. Yeah, that could be.
It was probably aesthetic.
Yeah, thinking of and relating to the road.
The way the road curves. And sometimes they measure, right, from the road back, and then they literally put it parallel with the road, and the road's curved. So there's all kind of, that's how my house was positioned broadly as it is because of the curved road.
So you can see Cedar Glen just along the...
And it went very tilted, and it's really far to the left. They have a lot of room on the right that they can't use. So I think that's a piece of this hardship.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I wanted to look at.
Yeah. I'm glad you asked about that.
Yeah, because I mean, I've driven by it, but sometimes I, you see, you can't figure out where property lines and everything are.
It's nice on the big screen.
Till it's mow season.
So if you look at that red square that is their, where they're allowed to have their house, the builder chose to put this house, the corner of it, almost on the setback. Which is limiting for them. And there may have been a reason for it, but it's still limiting with what they're dealing with.
Right.
I think we should consider that. They can't use the right side of their property at all. And there's a lot of room over there that's not upper grass.
Like, it was affected by the slopes and the setback.
And the septic and, you know, whatever else is over there.
Yeah.
So I think that's... Where is the well on this property? Is it a well or is it a town?
Well, I love it.
Oh, you can't speak. Is it a well or is it a town?
It's just a well.
It's just a well, okay.
So it's...
Okay.
Okay, so it's far enough. I was thinking maybe that would give me something to look up on that side. Okay.
So...
That's the well, and that's the septic.
I think that has to do with water. Is that water or is that conservation?
Good question.
The turquoise line, is that wetland?
Yeah, the, yeah, the squidling. Okay, I want to look at, can you put the picture of the front of the house again? Does it show, I'm just looking at how the driveway goes. We don't have anything that shows how.
You can see it there on that.
Well, I see it marked on here. I was hoping I could see it in a picture.
Really?
So it's a little hard to make out, but you can see the driveway here, and then it extends up to the road.
I'm looking at it, I know. Yeah, like when I, when I drove by, you know, I'm like, okay, let's see where's it. Oh, it's going to be this area. No, it's okay. We'll figure it out. He's going to give us a aerial view of your house. So helpful. It's not too funny. Oh, there you go.
There we go. Thank you.
I love it when you ask, and you can help what you ask. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Miracle of technology. I think we've got to consider the placement of this house on the property.
Well, yeah, I do too.
Because they, they've been given this not-centered home. And now they have to make it work as best they can.
Right, because I'm trying to, when you're looking at hardship, so you're trying to say, okay, what is making this one it's that more unusual than what is in their neighborhood?
Because it, whether or not the other ones are close to the property line like that, I don't know. But this one certainly isn't. It is causing a situation where they can't necessarily use the property. It's, you know, relates to the condition of the land, or the, well, the slope is the condition of the land. But the applicant... It doesn't have anything to do with anything the applicant's done. This is the...
Right.
The way it was created. So it could be, I mean, I think it's very likely peculiar to this structure that it's that close to the setback.
Okay.
And it's, it's the same with the backyard setback. They have a really sizable front yard that was, that they can't really take advantage of. The house is really tucked into that corner of the setback. Especially on the side. Would be able to pass over there.
Yeah.
It would make a, would have made a huge difference.
Yep. When you did that bird's eye view
The street view?
Well, the, yeah, the street, yeah, the bird's eye and then the street view.
Yeah.
Can you take that view and go over to the left, the next property? I just want to see how that property line.
The answer is can, will he?
Yeah, he will.
He will, because he's with us on this.
So this isn't GIS. I can log into GIS. You can actually see the
Thank you.
The rough property lines.
So the one that's sort of, that's highlighted is 10?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, it's funny how they tilted it on the property, on the, against the road. I think it was aesthetic.
Well, I think the road curves.
It does, but they didn't put the house straight with the road.
I know.
I think that the builder was placing the houses aesthetic, you know, for whatever his or her aesthetic reasons were, and it ended up being really close to that.
It could have even had something to do with digging the foundation.
It could have, it could have been something to do with the top feet, or what they were...
So the house you're concerned about is the...
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I just, yeah. But it makes me, you know, it makes me feel better, because that person has a lot of...
They have.
And then in the back, there's nothing really visual from the back either.
They are set, it looks like their house is probably also not centered. And they have a lot of room to that side.
I mean, the line might not be right. It almost looks like there might be an easement for the edge of their driveway on the next property. Either that or it's just offline.
Right.
Okay. I've seen enough on that.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
So considering the placement of the home in relation to the setback, considering the septic tank and the backyard slope, and the fact that they did ask, they did as we asked and reduced some sizes, took out that door, which I know was a convenience that they are not going to have now. I'm very appreciative of all of that. The rear yard setback backs up to nobody, and it is very small. The side yard setback is...
I mean, it's still a substantial percentage of the side yard, but since the road does curve beyond there, and the next property is also skewed
Right.
and also over to the left of their thing, it's, um...
Yeah, I think it's going to be a not issue for the neighbors, frankly. I don't think they're even going to notice it, which is probably maybe why they never responded to any opportunity to respond to it. I think we have... We definitely have some special conditions to do with the land and the way that the home is placed, which is peculiar to this particular piece of land. The applicant certainly hasn't had anything to do with it, because they didn't put this house in that position. So they had no way of preventing this. I would be inclined to... Are we ready to do that? Do you have anything else you want to mention, positive or negative? Let's do it. Comfortable? Make a motion to...
I, well, no, I have, I feel like I've seen everything that I could see relating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I certainly have a clearer understanding of it than I did an hour ago, so it was all a good discussion. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this application?
Fine.
Read that. Read that.
Moved, the Zoning Board of Appeals approves, approves application ZDA 24-02 of Curtis Looney and Manu Sing Looney, applicant owner, for a variance to Section 3.9 of the Cincinnati Zoning Regulations to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit within established property setbacks by reducing the side yard setback from plus or minus 40 feet to plus or minus 32.3 feet, and to reduce the rear setback, rear yard setback from plus or minus 50 feet to plus or minus 47.5 feet at 10 Cedar Glen, Assessors MAP E10, Block 147, Lot 207, Cincinnati, Connecticut, on 6770 Zone R40, as the applicant has met all the criteria pursuant to Section 16.C based on the following findings.
Now you have to list the hardships.
Slope.
Backyard slope.
Backyard slope.
Septic.
Septic.
Placement of the house.
Placement of the house.
Second? I second it. All in favor of approving application 2402, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Can pass.
There you go, appreciate all your input on this. So there's ten acres behind us that's empty. Does the, you use what you have here, too?
That's okay.
The well is up by the street.
Right.
That's where that is. I talked to my neighbor.
The neighbors.
The neighbor has approved.
Yeah, they would have come forward and said.
Yeah, so I talked to my son.
And that's, we don't really, can't use that, but it's just good information.
Yeah.
So, we appreciate all of your.
I appreciate. Of course you do.
Thank you.
I think you have any questions.
Yeah, makes you, you have to think about it, important. All right, our next order of business, general, wait, this is, yeah. General commission business bylaw discussion. Did everyone have a chance to look through all the changes? Did anyone have any more?
I think there were just a couple typos that I found.
Go ahead.
Okay, so on the B, order of business at hearings, business is one S.
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Where it says order of business at hearings, section B, or five, or, no, whatever. Section B, order of business at hearings. Did I business spelled wrong? I believe.
Yes, it is, order of business, B U S I N. There's two S's in there right now.
You are correct.
My eyes corrected that, I said.
Yeah, I'm hoping, yeah, and there was another one, I can circle that. I will find it though. Okay, so here was another, so under where you have officers and duties.
On page three.
Thank you. We're a good team here. Where you have the chairman's shell, so you're just missing periods at the end of B, preside over all meetings.
It's right here.
Pardon?
There's a period right there.
You have it there, okay, it doesn't on the copy, but I, okay, yep. Thank you. And I think there was.
Yeah, you had fixed that, it's on the red line version, it's fixed.
Okay, good, okay. And I thought that on the red line version, there was just one other typo, but I'm not seeing it this minute. You saw the business or the business.
Yep, I noted that one.
Oh, I know what one of the things was. We're, we've been meeting at seven, and I think it's, does it, in the revised one, it still says seven thirty?
No, in this one, it's seven, oh, yeah, it's changed to seven.
Okay.
So do we vote on these tonight?
Okay, and you can approve it with the conditions or the corrections that were noted during this meeting, and then just make a motion, and then they'll be effective.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the revised commission bylaws with, under, with the changes that we noted tonight to be made. Is there a second?
There's one.
I'll do.
All right.
Well, it's... And then approval of minutes, I did read the minutes, I didn't see anything wrong there. Did anyone else?
I didn't have anything wrong, I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything wrong. Looked good to me. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the zoning board of appeals regular meeting for Wednesday, March 27th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, no, what's the name? For Wednesday, April 24th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, or adjourned?